...to order. Everyone please rise. Thank you all for coming this evening. I'm sorry that the board is late, as you can see from the agenda. We had another board meeting over at the superintendent's office, which began at 4:30 and just ended so we rushed over here. Regarding recognition and comments from the chair, I'll spare you from my comments this evening because I left them at home and I had some really good stuff I wanted to say, I'll tell you that. I think it was about standardized testing within the district. That's something that we should take a look at and I was going to talk about it in the context of rising tuition costs at all. So I'll just leave you there until next month. We will move on to item 7.0. We have two sets of minutes to approve. We'll begin with the minutes from March 27. Is there a motion from the board? Move to approve by Steve. Second by Bill. Any further discussion on these? I did, but I don't have my list. I did want to make a change if I could borrow yours. It's all right to use Steve. Just for the record, and either you'll have to check this, and I'm doing this in light of some emails that I've received. Under the proficiency-based learning update, I think at the end of that discussion, I had made some comments that if you make any changes regarding report cards or reporting or something like that, that that will get reported back to the board and that we really need to do a good job as a district to communicate that out to the staff. Maybe I'm imagining it, maybe I didn't say that, but I think I did say that. So if I did, I'd like to ask Steve to bend the minutes to include that.
I agree with that.
Maybe I'm imagining it, maybe I didn't say that, but I think I did say that. So if I did, I'd like to ask Steve to bend the minutes to include that. Any other changes? All those in favor of the motion to approve with the change, raise your hand. Unopposed, passes. All right. The minutes from April 11, 2017. Move to approve by Steve. There are second, second by Allen. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Unopposed, passes. Okay, item 8.0, adjustments to the agenda. Patrick?
Just a, we need a spot for resignations, retirements, and then also 13.1A food service report. We would like to push that back to maybe next month's meeting, May.
So we will postpone the food service report until next one. That was made on 13.1 day. And under new business, let's do 14.1 day resignations, retirements. Any other adjustments? Okay. I'll open the floor up now for first or two public sessions. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to an item that is on the agenda? If you would, please come to the mic. If you have comments about an item that isn't on the agenda, I'd ask that you wait until our second public session. Anyone? Okay. Then on to item 10.0. This is second or third public forum to discuss proposed fiscal year 2018 school budget. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on the budget? Is there any discussion within the board about current budget? I think if you look, I suspect there are changes in this one. Go ahead, Jennifer.
After the last board meeting, we had a finance committee meeting and were given the, I was ultimated, it's not the right word, directive or asked nicely if we could look for some savings to the tune of around $100,000 to try to be sensitive to the local taxpayers of our communities. So we went back and we made $113,000 roughly reduction. And where that's coming from is we've removed two special ed tuitions in hopes that the new regional program will allow us to see those savings. And then also, and Deborah can talk more about this, but Anthem savings, we always budget prior year, but Anthem savings of around $18,000.
All right, so initially looking at the changes in this recently proposed budget based on the meetings that we had in the finance committee, just for folks who are watching, we are now looking at a total district increase of 2.53% as opposed to 2.92%. That would be a local contribution of 3.88% as opposed to 4.53%. And the impact that has to our four communities. Barosik, now instead of 7.65% increase, we see 7.16%. Bath, instead of 4.43%, we'd see 3.73%. Phippsburg, we reduce it from 3.86% to 3.38%. And Woolwich, we go from 4.9% increase down to 4.24%. Any comments from the board, questions about where we stand with this budget? Jennifer?
At least Steve had asked last time to consider some of the paying down the budget deficit. Do you come to see where that comes back?
Well, we did discuss that at the finance committee meeting. It was put out there for discussion. And Deb made a very persuasive argument to pay that deficit down. Well, we have, again, my original thought that they have, they have next year, but the numbers that administration presented suggest that if we're to get rid of that deficit as quickly as possible, it's only going to get worse. We're going, we're operating, we're going to, next year, we're still post deficit program. It's not on a page to go basis. But I think smaller, it's made to take out the deficit. And the committee seemed to have, we don't have a particular recommendation or the assesses of the committee was to accept the restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board regarding this most recent budget?
Steve?
I'd just like to say, we did ask Patrick to dig a little bit deeper into it, but I just want to remind the board and the public that this project still shows an increase year to year. So we're still increasing our investment in education for our kids in RSU. Doing that at a very frugal basis, but the investment is there.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the board? Anyone else from the public while we're talking about the budget? Any questions?
I was simply hoping that Patrick could repeat with the special education tuition, what you were hoping would offset.
Yeah, we have a regional special education program that still needs to be ironed out with four other districts that will be in place for next year. And we're hopeful that that will be a good fit for some of our, maybe some of our students that are currently in out of district placements someplace else that we can bring it back and receive services that are appropriate for them.
Anyone else from the public? Very well. We'll move on to committee reports. We'll begin with item 11.1, proficiency-based learning update. Judy?
So I don't have a lot new to report. We're just rolling along and trying to hone all the details that we need to attend to to get ready for our freshmen entering in the fall. There will be some summer work that'll take place with Morse High School faculty to make sure we have every last detail figured out as much as we can. A couple of clarifications. I had mentioned to you in the past that there was a chance that someone could pass a course but not meet the standards. That is no longer the case. We've done some work with departments so that the assessments that they give within a course contain the same indicators that are needed to pass the standard. So if you pass the assessment, you pass the course and you meet the standards. So hopefully that'll clarify the confusion that existed because of that. And also, I had told you last meeting that we would have the policy IKF graduation requirements ready for you this month. What I didn't realize is that our policy meeting is later this week, so we haven't had a chance to bring that to the committee yet. So we'll definitely have it to you next.
Any questions for Judy? And thank you. Item 11.2, Morse High School building project update. Patrick?
Yeah, just a quick update. We had 104 people in this room Tuesday before break for the Scrawpole vote for the site for the new high school and vocational school. And that's minus the administrators and the students that were in attendance. And all 104 voters in favor are going forward with the site. Just a quick thank you, I know Lorna Ryan, paraphrable, which is in the room. And she sits on our communications committee specifically for this project. And there's other people, David Flaherty, Kara Thalen, Michelle Lambert, Deb Keller, Nancy Ritz, who's been very helpful, was here tonight. So I appreciate their efforts. I think Dave Rich had set up 25 chairs in this gym, I mean, in this cafeteria, and to have 104 people was great. So I hope that we can continue that participation as we go through with the design phase. So starting on Thursday, instead of having three to four different meetings in a day, we will be combining all of our committees, design, sustainability, and building committee into one hour and a half meeting. And so it'll be a bigger group, but we're at a point now where we're all meeting on the same page. So starting Thursday as well, we will have sketches of the exterior of the school and we will have interior prints to be able to look at. And again, those will be drafts, but it's nice to be able to look at something concrete. So Ron and LaValle are pleased where we're at. We go up twice this week to Augusta to prepare for the May 10 meeting. That is, to get the state board approval for the site. So I think that's into that.
Any questions for Patrick? Patrick, do you have any updates or insight on where we stand with the real estate, different real estate transactions?
We have the option to purchase on all the pieces of property that we need. We're waiting, still waiting to get back about, you know, the industrial park in general as far as, you know, the EDA. But as far as all of our properties, we have the option to purchase on all of them.
Thank you. Item 11.3, finance committee update. Steve?
I guess, as we mentioned before, the finance committee that discussed the budget generally gave out these recommendations, which Patrick has discussed. I think the committee generally is feeling pretty good about the budget as it stands. We are leading next Thursday, May 4, which will be our last bite in the budget. Because on May 8, it goes to the full board. Well, I shouldn't say the last one, but it's going to go to the board on May 8 for a vote and warrants to be signed at that point. So the board is just, it's sort of on cusp. Pretty soon, we're going to be responsible for this budget, not that. So if you do have issues or questions, I'll try to make the finance committee answer them so we can get those here and get that response.
Are there any questions for Steve? Item 11.4, communications committee update. Lou?
Sure. We're moving along. We have another meeting this week. And after getting some feedback and talking to folks at the different schools, we're, some extensive interviews with staff. And I think it's been pretty positive and we have a really enthusiastic group. And so now they're starting to divide things into what could be some short-term things as well as some longer-term recommendations. And I know one of our members met with Dean and had a good talk about technology as part of what everyone's realizing. There's a lot of good things about EAPs. What are the tools that we have that could be better utilized by everyone? And kind of mainstreamed and then what else might need to be added? So it's all still a really good discussion and some things are percolating.
Okay, thank you, Lou. Lou, when is your next meeting?
Wednesday.
So this Wednesday or?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Thank you. Any questions for Lou? All right. Superintendent's report.
I just want to let the board know that Ruth Ann Harrison, who was here, might have been last month, our senior coordinator, also engineering instructor at the RCTC, received a grant from the National Endowment for the Humanities Landmarks of History and Culture for teachers. Basically, this will allow her to go to Chicago for a week this July and participate in a program sponsored by the Chicago Architecture Foundation called the American Skyscraper. This week-long program will bring 72 teachers from around the country together to explore a series of themes around skyscraper architecture, history, and urban planning. Her goal is to bring these elements back to our communities as well as to the classroom. So congratulations to Ruth Ann and it's not the first grant or period opportunity she's received. Next, JNG sent 15 students to compete in the career development conference at the end of March. All the students arrived at school on time and that morning it was 6:15, the load of bus to get up there. Maria Morris talked about how respectful, how responsible, and attentive her students were. But just to give you an idea, the types of competitions that they participated in revolved around interviews, employment application packages, marketing, problem solving, and public speaking. And Morse was well represented with several first and second place finishes. April 11th, at the Portland Press Herald, there was an article in there about the Learner Foundation and grants that they had given to community organizations as well as school districts. And RSU One was one of those recipients. So we'll receive a six-year, $600,000 grant. And really, it's a program to deal with aspirations of middle school students and then following it down through high school. And the community partner for us that was awarded is with Chawaki, which is great for us because we already have a relationship with them. So it's a very exciting partnership that we'll have with them. And it down in the midcoast, further down in the midcoast, they had used a form of aspiration building that I think will be the model that will be used here at RSU One as well. And then lastly, I've mentioned this a couple of times, but you saw it in the paper as well about the regional special education program that we were awarded, which is about, I think it's $518,000. And we have a planning meeting next week with four other districts. And I believe the focus will be on high school students that need more support, that there'll be a behavior program that will be located at Wiscasen High School. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Who applies for that Learner Foundation grant? Is that a district-wide thing or is it Chawaki or something? Great. Any questions for Patrick? And we will go to item 12.2, financial report. Yeah?
Our financial report tonight is for the month of March. That leaves us with four months left before completing this year. And we are at 65% compared to 67% for last year. So that shows that we're spending pretty much in line with what we have done in the past year. So hopefully we have a little bit of a balance to carry forward. Once again, special ed tuition, secondary tuition's a little bit of a concern, which I know we will go over there, but hopefully we'll have coverage in the other area. As far as our revenue, we've received 74% compared to 76% last year. So once again, we're pretty much in line with what we've done in the past. And that's about it. Woolwich refunding is moving forward. We've done all the requirements that were necessary. And the bonds will go for sale early in May. And so we'll see a little bit of a difference there next year. We won't be able to make any changes in the budget, but we'll see a little bit next year. That's it.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Steve has a question. Why can't you recapture those savings? They should be refunded. The refinements.
Because we won't have the actual post, the sale of the bonds completed before we have to finalize this budget and do warrant articles. And it's very minimal for the local side anyways. It's basically the state side and then the state will adjust subsidy next year and therefore will adjust the expenses. So it's kind of a...
We can adjust our revenue, but we can't spend money because...
Correct.
It should have to be included in the warrant before we know exactly what the state will do. Right, all right. Goal business. View 2016, 2017 order goals. Kenny?
Well, I'm privileged to sit next to my esteemed board member here, Lou, and helping us with our communication effort. So I think his work is helping us meet our communication goal. Certainly moving forward on the construction project. The Scrawpole vote is one of those key items in that. And I think having that underway really allowed our process to move forward. And I think that we are certainly being able to move forward with our proficiency-based education requirements. We had a lot of help with that. Patrick mentioned the STEAM initiatives going forward. I know that we still struggle with item 4, which is our, it's part of our food service program. But I think that we have continued to work on that and will have that probably as a role for next year. And I think that we're addressing those issues as best as we can. And I think that we'll be, given the budget of Patrick, we're going to need to make it sort of up and hard on our board for next year. We're doing good.
Any thoughts from other board members on the goals? No? Move on to item 13.2. Discussion of siblings of grandfather students at West Bath School. Talked at the last meeting of continuing that discussion and sort of generally finalizing some thoughts from the board. We should have received an email from Patrick that detailed some of the costs associated with that. Patrick, I don't know if you want to take a minute and just break that email down?
Yeah, I'll try to keep it as simple as possible. But, and I know this isn't the direct scenario that we're faced with, but to our knowledge, there's five students over a period of time, next couple of years, that are siblings that would want to go to West Bath to be with their sibling. And so the question last time was, is what financial impact does that have to the district? So, you know, it does go through our EPS formula, our E2794. And Deb and I have looked at it. We've also asked for someone else to look at it. And, you know, roughly, if they all want to come next year, all five, you know, we're looking at about $22,000 that the district would lose. Also, the piece would be that the percentages would change for each town because our cost share of all is based on number of students and where they're from in towns. So what I mean really, not to get into the weeds on this, is, you know, approximately 22,000 is what we're looking at. And then if those students were to stay, you know, West Bath is K to five, that's six years. So if you just did a simple math, 22,000 times six years, you know, it's approximately $130,000 over time. And again, that'd be unknown factor of would there be more, would there be more coming? That's what we know as of now. So again, I'm just trying to send you something based on facts of us looking into this and diving into this. So it isn't as simple as just saying the state's tuition rate is $8,000. Because I guess I would say it's not as expensive as that. Because if you did that, it'd be $40,000, times that'd be $240,000. So there's some give and take in the EPS formula that gets us to that number.
Okay, thank you. Any thoughts from the board? Any further thoughts or more discussion? Okay, all right.
I think I laid out my concerns the last time. One further thing that pertained, and all of this is in this room now, obviously. But the continuation of, of siblings in West Bath would lapse, the date of our court in West Bath and the way the court sort of lapses in 10 years. So, you know, in a lot of other ways, I think we were, it's not my position at all, but we should, if we were to consider continuing practice of siblings in West Bath, and we have to closely act to renegotiate our, our West Bath to extend this beyond, given our intent. Part of that imperative, they have identified us as disagreeing as defaults. So they said students, but it's quite considerable. It's asked considerable is not that at the end of that decade, it may not be, it can also, it could change a set of relationships.
Any other thoughts from the board? The sentiment that I got the last time is that we recognize that there's a continuity issue, that it impacts families. And I know that within the district... issue, that it impacts families, and I know that within the district, you know, continuity was a big part of the discussion that we had in looking at combining Fisher-Richell and Diagnol and some of the advantages that we see with Woolwich. At the same time, the way that that discussion progressed, we decided for the district, it was in our best interest to keep those schools separate for now and focus on making those transitions better, focusing on transitions, having more interaction between the students. I think that said, I think that the, I know, having been part of that negotiation, that the sibling issue did come up, and it was not included in the agreement. My feeling is, the sentiment of the board is that we respect the agreement, we know the financial impact that it has to the district, and that we leave it to, you know, the individual families to pursue the options that they may have and rely on. You know, Patrick's decision is superintendent. Have I misrepresented that at all? Okay. Okay? So we don't need to take a vote, just finalize the discussion. Okay. Item 14.0, New Business. Item 14.1, we have a list of probationary teachers who had an attachment in your packet. This is an action item. Would somebody like to begin with a motion? All right, Lou. All right. Lou, approve this. Okay, motion from Steve to approve, second by Bill. Any discussion about this list? Patrick, anything you wanted to share with the list?
No, I mean, I think these are recommendations coming from our administrative team, and by law, we have a three-year probationary period in Maine, so that's why we're showing you one to two, two to three, and three to continue the contract.
Any further discussion or questions from the board regarding this list? It's a fairly extensive list. A lot of new teachers in the district. Jen?
I just have a question. Is there any time that we would be required to weigh in on any decisions in terms of offer of continuing contract? Not as much as the third or fourth year, but I guess some of the continuing contract. As a board, are we ever responsible for responding to that decision or not? I don't think we are, but I always want to clarify my role by making sure that I do everything that we're supposed to be doing. So my question is then, if there's a question of offer of continuing contract or not, does that ever get brought? Is there any need to bring that? Just a question.
I mean, I'll share my perspective, and then I'll turn it over to Patrick. Having done this for a while, this is one of those items that I feel that as a board, we actually probably do more harm than help by weighing in on these individuals. This list has come to us, you know, through the administration. They work with these folks. They're the ones who make the recommendations to Patrick. Patrick then reviews it with his staff. They make the recommendations for us. While it is an action item and we do have to take a vote on it, it is one of those head-scratching items that I feel like, as a board, it's really not our place to speak out about this or to question the list simply because we're not working with this staff.
If we have to vote on it, so I feel like I'm voting on something that I don't know, you know, is there an issue, has there not been an issue, you know? And then, continuing contract, my hearing, is a very significant thing, you know? It locks us into this person, you know, with some ability to make changes. It's a pretty consistent thing that's going to happen now in the future with districts. And so I don't know, maybe we just vote on them, and I know there's a great process in place. I just wondered if it ever would come to the board, if there would be any...
I think you raise a good question in that perhaps the question is not asking about the individuals, but more asking about the process.
Yes.
And do, does each school go through a different process? How is the process handled? What happens when a school has a large number of people? Is that a challenge?
Will it be education on that, in some way?
Yeah, I would just echo Tim's response. I'm not going to repeat it. But I think this is one of the ones where we need to trust the administrative team. And we would not, I'll call it personal matters here, if we had a concern, you know, we'd deal with it on the administrative team, and then I would turn it to the board level if there was an appropriate time to do that. And not always is it a good fit. And there are times when we don't, it doesn't work. And sometimes those get worked out ahead of time. I'm trying to be as vague as I can here. So we could certainly, I think we've given you, I think it's been a couple of years now, that we've given you an overview of our observation, evaluation, and expectations. But now that we have some changes to that, it wouldn't be a bad idea this summer or beginning of next year to go through that with you. And then I can explain how I meet with the principals and talk with them about, you know, reservations. But again, those first one to three years now, we're also trying to support people, maybe putting people on a kind of a designated action plan too, to say that we need to see improvement by a certain time, or, again, it may not be a good fit here, but this list here, the administrators are confident in these people's abilities and how they will grow into the right direction to continue the contract.
Does that answer your question?
Well, look forward to that this summer, like, after doing that, you know, being there for more, what about...
Any other thoughts?
So this just shows why everyone's status is pretty low in this position. To have a continuing contract, that's the observation, for now, and all, whatever it is, and then all full.
Okay. Within a three-year window?
No, no, I know, it's three years. I'm saying, once you shift, so the folks on continue the contract, or off, we'll see when they're close enough. Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve this list. All those in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. None opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, on to item 14.1A, Resignations and Retirements. Patrick?
Now, these are just for your information. One resignation is Kyle Beaton from Woolwich Central School, middle school teacher, and would like to thank Kyle for three years of service to the district. Next resignation is Scott Walker, Athletic Director at the high school, and I'd like to thank Scott for eight years of service to the district. And last but not least, retirement, Ellen Beal, who was still here tonight for 31 years. And I'd like to thank Ellen for all of her time at Woolwich, in the kitchen there, as well as being our Food Service Director here at RSU One.
Okay, now I'd just like to echo that. Thank you all for your service to the district. We appreciate what you've done. Item 14.2, Approval of the Application Process for Two New VRCTC Programs. Patrick had sent an email regarding this. This is not necessarily for approval of the program, but just to allow the process to go forward to apply within the state. So is there a motion regarding these two programs, this causismatology, and criminal justice are correct?
Motion for approval.
Okay, motion for approve. Alan? Second by Lou. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that passes. Item 14.3, Out-of-State Field Trip Request from VRCTC Engineering Program. This is a new one. Not seen this one before. Yep? Is there a motion to approve? Bill to approve. Second? Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve? Raise your hand. Any opposed? None opposed? That passes. Item 50.0, Public Comment. We'll open it up. 31 hours from the public. We'd love to speak. Okay. On to item 16.0, Set Next Meeting Dates and Locations. We have two meetings coming up. Second reading of the budget, which is Monday, May 8, at BMS. Put that on your calendar. And then our next regular board meeting is Monday, May 22, BMS. The concerned conflicts. This is a really quick meeting, I don't give this. It was a big, that was a big, this was a big agenda. Something, I'm missing something. It was my bonus. It's like I'm kidding myself. So you guys like it? That's fine. So be it. Is there a motion to adjourn? Booed by Bill? Second by Alan? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, thank you, administration for coming. This meeting is adjourned.